We have an interpreter here to provide Spanish language interpretation. Mario Barajas, would you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be making a brief announcement in Spanish for our Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Voy a estar sirviendo como su intérprete de español. Si acaso hay alguien presente quien desea escuchar la interpretación al español, pueden pasar hacia la parte de atrás del cuarto y poder conseguir los aparatos para la interpretación al personal. Pueden acudir con cualquier miembro de la ciudad, personal de la ciudad. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call to order the June 26, 2019 Assisted Housing Governing Board meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board member DeCecio?
Here.
Board member Garcia?
Here.
Board member Guardado?
Here.
Board member Nowakowski?
Here.
Board member Pastor?
Here.
Board member Weisehan?
Here.
Board member Williams?
Here.
Vice Chair Waring?
Chairwoman Gallego?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the minutes from the May 15, 2019 meeting of the board?
I move that the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Item number four is a resolution on a proposed asset management budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. Do we have a motion?
I move that it be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say, signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is related to 25 Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Project-based vouchers. These may be used in a later agenda item during our formal meeting for the parcel located at 723 West Polk Street to provide housing for veterans in our communities. Do we have a motion?
I motion that it be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Weisehan. With that, we are adjourned for the meeting of the Assisted Housing Governing Board. We will now call to order the meeting, the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Will our clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado?
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here.
Will the clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6602, S45845 through 45889, and resolutions 21760 through 21761.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the Mayor and City Council Board and Commission nominations?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have members of the public here to be sworn in. I will now swear them in. Thank you. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of, according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Item number two is the swearing-in of members of our judiciary. We will take that item after we do our liquor license agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor license applications?
Move to approve items three through 12, accept item eight and item 12, which is requested by the applicant to be continued to July 3, 2019.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. Item number eight is in Councilman Michael Nowakowski's district. Councilman?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to continue this until July 3. But I'm also asking the applicant, is the applicant here? If the applicant can go to the state and really try to work out an extension at the state level, what's going on is that we have some neighbors and businesses there that have some concerns, and I'd really like to have a chance to sit everyone together and try to work things out. I know that there's a time limit. I think it's August 8 or something like that. So if there's a way for you to ask for an extension pass on August 28, where we can bring it back to the council during that time, where I believe there's enough time for us to gather with the community and really work things out. I think once we sit around the table, have a conversation, we can work things out and make this all happen. If you're in favor of that, that'd be great. If not, then we'll extend it to July 3. And then July 3, then I would deny the application if there's not an extension to that. Yeah, absolutely.
If you could come forward to the microphone so that people watching online can hear as well. Thank you. And if you could state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Rashida Worthy. I'm the applicant for the liquor license for the Boom Boom Room. Good afternoon, Council. I just wanted to share some additional information that I didn't feel I had the opportunity to present because I was kind of given all of this information within the last 24 hours because I was additionally informed that we were all set to approve this motion. We have, our group has met, I personally have met with the neighbors. Many of them are here. Most I've never seen before, but I met with the leaders of two of the neighborhood associations, always in the spirit of compromise and always in the spirit of community and business working together because that is my history. However, I have been stonewalled. So if we can get an agreement from the neighbors and these association leaders that the purpose of our meeting is to discuss and find some resolutions to some of the issues that have brought forth, and these do have to be issues that I have the ability to solve. I can't solve all community issues, but if I have the ability to solve these issues, I am more than willing and want to. I would like for this business to be part of the community and a community project that we can all be proud of. But I am concerned that that's not going to be the case and that this is just a tactic to delay this process. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. And I would like to just gather people together, have that conversation, see if we can work things out. And if there's, we're not able to work things out, then we'll see if it's reasonable or if it's not reasonable. Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman. We have two cards in support and five in opposition. Is there anyone who would like to testify in whether it is appropriate to do a motion to continue? So we will not be having the substantive vote on the item right now, but whether you're comfortable with the continuance?
Good afternoon. My name is Brianna Worthy. I'm the daughter of Rashida Worthy and the granddaughter of Deborah Mateen, who is the owner of the property that we're discussing. I would also be coming in as a lead manager and director for our staff and be the frontline communication with the community. And I just wanted to first let it be known that I'm always more than happy and willing to talk and compromise and work with anyone who's willing to come to the table. We are interested in meeting so that we can come forth on July 3. So anything such as Monday would be beautiful. And I'd like them to be more open to speaking with me as well as I have not been able to speak with any members of the community from Oakland Neighborhood Association and Grand Arts Preservation. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Nowakowski, the motion was to continue to our July 3 council meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. We have a motion. We do not have a second yet. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
That concludes our liquor license agenda. We will then return to... Did the motion to continue? Okay. So our city clerk confirms item number 12 was continued till July 3.
Yeah, it was part of the consent. Yeah. It got continued, right?
Yes, it was continued. Concerning for the record, item number 12 was continued to the July 3 meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We will now return to item number two, which is the swearing-in of our chief presiding judge, be Don Taylor III, and Judge Wilbur Hudson. The council has previously voted on these nominations, but we want to congratulate Judge Taylor, who's helped us lead the courts on a variety of very innovative programs, including our Compliance Assistance Program, helping thousands of people navigate the court system and have fines and fees that are fair, as well as working on suspended license court. We want to congratulate Judge Hudson, who has been very active in serving our veterans and making sure that all have equal access to justice. We really appreciate you helping us create an innovative court system that does its best to be fair to our community. And so with that, we will administer the oath of office. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of judge according to the best of my ability.
To the best, according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Waring, do we have a motion?
Move to approve items 13 through 98, except items 24, 33, 38, 43, 72, 73, 79, 81, and 89.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any changes to the motion? Everything included? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number 24?
Move to approve item 24.
Second.
Item number 24 is Solarstar Arizona 3 LLC. Leonard Clark has filled out a card in favor. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark, native and resident of Phoenix. I strongly support this solar power approval that you're going to do for the water treatment plant. I was reading in the agenda here, provides up to 75% of the power for the water treatment plant. So I just hope everybody at home is going on YouTube, learning how to make their own solar power. Sorry APS, SRP, but we have to liberate ourselves. Solar power is the way to go. We're the DJBuddy of basically the world when it comes to sunlight. And I think 7.5 megawatts, that's something to be very proud of in the city of Phoenix. Now, let's go out there and put solar panels on everything, whether SRP or APS likes it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council member comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Item passes unanimously?
Move to approve item 33.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clark has a card on this item as well, the Central Arizona Water Conservation District.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm a member of, not a member, but a citizen of District 1. And we were all concerned. We just passed the water tax. We had been hearing rumors of spot shortages in northern Phoenix. So knowing that we're here today to approve this expenditure for Central Arizona Project Water is a great reminder to all of our citizens that we live in a desert and water is one of the most, if not the most precious resources we have right now with man-made global climate change going on. So hopefully, the city of Phoenix will continue to be the leader in innovating and coming up with the best ways of saving water because we cannot be loaded into complacency by this last good season of rainfall that we had. We are still in a drought, and we've been in a drought since the year 2000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And thank you to our council members who are currently leading a task force on water conservation. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Item passes unanimously. Item 38.
Move to approve item 38.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clark? National Association of Clean Water Agencies Annual Payment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark. Phoenix leads the way. We are the largest city in Arizona. So I think it is great. I strongly approve of this, being part of this clean water group of agencies. We're all concerned. We have children who are born with physical and cognitive challenges, and a lot of it can be attributed, some people are saying, to what is in our water. So we need to be on top of this because I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the outlying cities to our valley. So we need to continue to be the leaders in having the cleanest water. Our children cannot afford to be drinking water that will poison them and give them these challenges when they grow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Item passes unanimously. Item 43?
Move of approval.
We have a motion and a second?
Carlos.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I wanted to ask some questions of staff. I think, wanted to know how many of these unusual and complex cases were related to police department?
Where's the staff?
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, about 40% of the cases that we hire outside counsel for and use legal services relate to the police department and interactive. I don't know for sure on the exact 500,000, how that breaks down because I don't even know all the invoices off the top of my head, but about 40% of those are police department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, did we get a second on this agenda? Okay. Any further comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Stark?
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Item passes eight to one. Item 72.
Move to approve item 72.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Pastor?
I have some comments. And if staff could... So first of all, I want to thank Councilman Nowakowski for all his work. I know he's been working on this for the last five years and has been wanting to move this item forward. Some of you may not know, this property is a, over 100 years ago, this property was deeded to the city of Phoenix for the expression and purpose of the American Veterans and the American Legion Number One. And on February 20, 2019, the deed ended. And I think it's very important that we continue to honor the legacy of this property. So I wanted to ask staff if there is a possibility to deed this property for 99 years, have a 99-year restriction, it could be 100, to maintain workforce and affordable housing on the property.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, absolutely. The property is in the city's ownership, so at the direction of this council, that certainly could be part of the request for proposal, is that restriction would be placed on the property for that period of time. That's something very easy for the city to do.
Okay. And then further, when I was looking at the packet and looking at the RFP, is there a possibility to place a concept to activate the site in the evaluation area?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, absolutely. If we put it, language in the concept to activate the site, we certainly could work with Historic Preservation and the Historic Preservation Office to allow points for preservation of a portion of the building or, you know, the direction of the council. We certainly could add those in as points that would be received should a proposer choose to preserve a portion of the building or elements of the building. We could put that in, absolutely.
And the reason why I'm asking is because on June 4, I want to say June 4, that's when we had our committee meeting. And this was really when I had asked, could you, when we were going through the dialogue, really wanting to preserve some form of that property. And so I hadn't really thought about it till today, since it showed up, and so I wanted to know if that's possible.
Yes, ma'am. We can add that portion into the RFP and into that scoring criteria. And I do remember that from your subcommittee meeting, and we did take those notes.
Okay. And then thirdly, I just have a question, and I know we change directions every two seconds, depending on what council's present and what council has gone. But I was just curious as to why we're not leasing the land, why we're selling it.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that is up to the council and the direction of the council as to whether you choose to dispose of your land or whether you choose to maintain a long-term land lease. We've done both. Most recently, as you'll remember, we did Central Station as a long-term land lease. I believe it was a 99-year land lease on Central Station that showed that as a revenue generator for the city for the 99 years. So it is at the pleasure of this council.
Okay. Councilman Nowakowski?
Can I add at least one and two? And would you consider three?
You know what? I would think that having a 99-year concept where the Legion is there, working as they are now, would be something that would be ideal. We had conversations in the past, making sure whoever develops this property knows that the Legion is a part of this property for the next 99 years. With the rest of the issues, I think it's really, I'd like to hear the comments from the Legion themselves and see what their thoughts are. Or any of my colleagues.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio?
I'd be supportive of whatever Councilman Nowakowski wants to do with this, as long as the American Legion is included in the deed restriction. If it's not, then I won't be supportive.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, if I might just respond to the comment you made about the American Legion remaining there for an additional 99 years. Upon guidance from our law department, we have in the request for proposal that the Veterans Community Services and Veteran Services would remain on the site and that it would be a minimum of 30% workforce or affordable housing with a preference to veterans. We can't name one specific organization as to the veteran's preference, but it does state that it is for veterans. I just wanted to provide that information for you, just from a legal standpoint. They questioned whether we could make it directly for one veterans' organization.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Again, if we're going to be doing a deed restriction of affordable housing, I want to make sure, and I won't support this unless it has it in there, if we're going to be going doing deed restrictions, I want to make sure that the American Legion or any veteran-related organization is also deed restricted in the property too. I'll support it at that point. If not, then I won't.
Mayor?
Councilman Nowakowski?
Would that be legal for us to state it that way?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski and Councilman DeCecio, we certainly can list it as the preference for the veterans' organizations, absolutely.
And I would ask the person that made the motion, second, if that was our right with them to add that friendly amendment to it.
I think it was Waring. And would you be willing to, the concept to activate the site? There are incentive points. Am I correct, Chris?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, Councilwoman Pastor, that's correct. They wouldn't be required, but those would be additional points that they would receive in their RFP in the concept to activate the site. And that was, as we recall, what we discussed at the subcommittee.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, if the makers would change that.
Are you okay with it? Thank you. And then three is up to, it's all up to us if we want to sell it or lease it. I don't, it's not a, we didn't have this discussion at the, so I'm willing to go with one and two.
I think we settle with one and two.
Okay. All right.
You got what you needed. Fantastic.
Wonderful. We have several individuals here to testify. Patrick Mays is first, followed by Beatrice Moore.
I come before you today as a three-term past commander of the American Legion Post One. I've also been chosen by the membership of Post One to be their representative in matters concerning lease and development of the property where our post currently sits. My name is Patrick Mays, and I'd like to talk to you about the American Legion. The American Legion is a nonpartisan, not-for-profit, patriotic veterans' organization. We are devoted to mutual helpfulness and committed to mentoring youth and sponsorship of wholesome programs in our communities, advocating patriotism and honor, promoting strong national security, and continued devotion to our fellow service members and veterans by assisting them and their families in the ways that we are able. Upon becoming involved with Post One, I learned that our site, which had been leased to us in 1920 on a 99-year lease, was within a few years of expiring. I made it my goal to secure a long-term solution so that Post One could remain on its historic site where it still sits today. I sought assistance in two different fronts for my endeavor. One front was the community which surrounded Post One, including many historic preservationists, one of whom you will hear from following my remarks. The other front was to approach the city and attempt to become a meaningful partner in a collaborative solution to keep Post One where it is. My community advocates really came through for me. They were invaluable in giving me the education I needed in navigating the political landscape surrounding downtown development. in navigating the political landscape surrounding downtown development. They were extremely supportive and encouraging. I am forever grateful to them and look forward to many years of friendship and cooperation with them. I was also soon introduced to Chris Mackey and her staff at the Department of Economic Development. I found the staff to be fair, attentive, and compassionate. After several meetings, I was able to secure a lease extension, keeping Post One onsite until 2020. I also sought a collaborative solution to develop the site going forward. I am passionate about historic preservation. For over thirty years, I've been an advocate for downtown preservation. I still reside in a historic neighborhood. But preservation at all costs is no service to anyone. This is not about what I want. This is about what American Legion Post One needs, which is a place to help our service members, veterans, and their families in our community. Surely, we can agree the most historic significance of the American Legion mission is what deserves to be preserved. It has always been the position of the American Legion that adaptive reuse of our current facility would be preferable. It is something the Legion wholeheartedly is behind as an option. However, it should remain just that, an option. To make it a mandate or restriction, we believe, limits our opportunity. I have been assured that the American Legion will have the opportunity to offer input on the RFPs that come in. And it's for these reasons that the American Legion Post One endorses this RFP process going forward. We have the rare chance to become an example to the rest of the nation for what can be achieved when local government, community service, and neighborhoods come together to do something truly special. Thank you.
Thank you. Beatrice Moore, followed by Bob Graham.
Mayor Gallego, Councilman Nowakowski, and esteemed council members, we're here today to talk about a very important building that contributes substantially to the historic fabric of historic Grand Avenue. This is probably one of the most, if not the most, important building in this area. This building is eligible for historic preservation. That doesn't mean the whole site has to have a historic overlay on it. It can just be the building itself. And some of the things that are being proposed in the RFP, looking for a place that can house services for veterans, this building is a perfect building to renovate. It, it's been underutilized. There's a lot of space there that's, that's very sporadically used. With some renovation, I'm passing around my letter that I'm kind of pulling from today, but there's also a picture there of the Bragg's Pie Factory Building, which my partner and I purchased in two thousand and four. A lot of people thought that building should be torn down. Well, please look at the before and after photo with the letter that's going around, because it will show you how derelict the building looked before we bought it. And we cut doors out, we cut windows out. Just because something is, is on the historic preservation list doesn't mean that you can't make changes to it. We were able to cut out storefronts. We were able to add windows, glass doors to the building. And it's a very usable anchor building on that street today. The American Legion is the same thing. A lot of people don't think it looks very good. That building can be fixed up and it can be actually an incredible contributor, not only to the historic fabric of the neighborhood, but provide services for veterans at that site. One question I have is, why aren't we providing a hundred percent affordable housing for veterans at that site? If anything new is constructed in addition to, say, the historic building, and that was an early conversation with Patrick and people at the Legion, was adding some new, new affordable housing for veterans, why are we not talking a hundred percent affordable here? Why are we not looking for a hundred percent housing for veterans? This is all self-imposed by the city, this RFP, everything in it. This property was given to the city one hundred years ago specifically for the use of the American Legion and veterans. Why are we trying to change that now? We don't need any more upscale housing downtown. We have way more than enough. We need affordable housing. People are getting pushed out of downtown. Phoenix has stated that veterans are their number one priority, homeless veterans, to get them off the street. We need to put proof in the pudding on that. We can't just keep talking about these issues. We need to do something about it. So, I would like to see this RFP changed, number one, to include a substantial historic preservation component for the key building on the site that would then be utilized for, perhaps, keep the historic bar there? Add offices and whatnot for services that cater to the veterans? Perhaps even some apartments in that building itself? And then, there could be some new construction added for affordable housing for veterans along the perimeter. But we're not talking about an overlay on the whole site. We're talking about overlay on the building, which adds more potentiality for the rest of the site there. So, I really do hope that perhaps even if, if you have to continue this, to continue the conversation, we want what's best for the veterans, but we also want something that's not going to set a terrible example on the part of the city by saying it's okay to tear down a hundred-year-old building. And what's going to happen to the rest of Grand Avenue? Once that happens, other people are going to look at that example and they're going to say, oh, I'm just going to tear down my building also. So, please, please consider...
Before you leave, hold on a second. Mayor, may I ask some questions here?
Yes, Councilman DeCiccio.
When, I had similar conversation, almost identical to what you were talking about with Chris. I thought we were going to make this completely a hundred percent veterans-oriented to a user when we talked at one time. What happened to that?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, what we brought forward on the site to bring it to development standards is to bring a minimum of thirty percent workforce or affordable housing onto the site with a preference to veterans. It does not preclude a submitter to submit other things on the site or other types of workforce housing on the site. So, there are, as we visited, as we visited with housing entities, as we visited with others, they also felt besides the affordable housing, that workforce housing was a good component in downtown Phoenix. As we step on the, the west side of Seventh, Seventh Avenue, your height restrictions become much, your height ability becomes much less. It's fifty-six feet as you cross over. So, the type of development that you could do on the site would bring a lot more workforce housing. So, that is still our goal, is to identify in the RFP that it's a mixed-income site in the workforce and affordable. It won't see, we won't see the projects that we see along Central Avenue and high rises and others that are the, becoming the pretty significant rents in the area. These would be much more like what we talked about.
I do appreciate that. I mean, this is actually a great opportunity to focus primarily on the veterans. We talked, that was something that the city has made a goal for many years now. And when it was given, we may have had to take it under a lease at the time. I don't know how that works. That was a hundred years ago. I think it was before my time. I feel old today, but that's what it was. But this could give us a great opportunity to focus a hundred percent on veterans. I'd like to add a friendly motion here to the maker of the motion, if you'd be willing to do it, to gear this entire project toward veterans, affordable housing and workforce development toward veterans.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, if I might just provide a piece of clarification, and I'd look to Cindy Stotler to answer that. It's, it's my understanding that in accordance with the Fair Housing Act, we control preference to veterans, but we can't state one specific entity. I would look to our housing director to answer that for us, just for clarification.
Well, you've already said in here, it's going to require twenty-five Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Project-based vouchers. So, if you can do twenty-five, why can't you do it all?
Mayor and members, Mayor and members of the council, Councilman DeCiccio, we offered up twenty-five VASH vouchers, Veterans Assistance Supportive Housing vouchers, during the subcommittee meeting when it was requested by, actually, Councilman Nowakowski, to ensure that at least twenty-five of those units would be set aside specifically for veterans. So, it's not just a preference on those twenty-five. Those are set aside specifically for veterans. So, that is guaranteed veterans' housing. We could look at offering more. I have to go back and look at the number of vouchers that I have available. We can only offer what we have, but we could, we could maybe expand that. I'm not sure how many units we were looking at in total on this development. So, we'd have to look at that.
Well, like I said, if you add one, you could add, I mean, the minute you open up a door. All available vouchers, yeah? Okay, Jim might think you added some really good language. All available vouchers. That would be focused here.
And I, I do think it is important to remember, in the community process for this, there were people who came forward and said they wanted to see diverse communities so that they, they thought mixed use and mixed income was very important because we do need housing for teachers and others who work in the community. And some of the stakeholders, including the school district, have also said that they like the idea of seeing different mixes of incomes, that diverse communities can be healthier. So, from my perspective, I do see value in having a diversity of price points. Councilwoman Pastor?
If we do all vouchers, does that eliminate, what are the, I guess I'll ask this question. What are the categories that we use the vouchers for? Because there's categories that we, we've identified.
Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, it depends on the types of vouchers we want to put on there. So, a regular Section Eight voucher is available to anyone with, any household with incomes at fifty percent or, or below of area median income. And then, the VASH vouchers that we're talking about today, that we're putting twenty-five on this project, are for veterans only. They come through the Veterans Administration. They're, they're referred by the Veterans Administration. They put in there and they're provided services by the Veterans Administration. So, there's complications if we want to make it all Section Eight. I would have to go back and look at if I have those vouchers available. I have to have the number of vouchers available to put on there. And then, do we want to make it permanent supportive housing? Would we have to add services and require services and things like that? So, it complicates it a little bit more.
I think it was all available vouchers.
And my understanding is that services are part of the RFP.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that's correct. So, veteran services and someone on the team that has experience providing veteran services are on the RFP already today.
So, as a friendly amendment, I'd like to make all available veteran vouchers that would be available for the site, that they'd have to require to be able to service the entire veteran community of how many vouchers we have, rather than, say, a limit of twenty-five. That would...
Councilwoman Williams?
Cindy, where else can you use those vouchers that you're using now? Is that like domestic violence and, and some of the other areas that we have set as priorities also?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, and members of the council, these are specific vouchers. If we're talking about the Veterans Assisted Supportive Housing vouchers, they are specifically set aside for veterans and coming through the, the Veterans Administration. So, I have nine-hundred-and-three total Veterans Assisted Supportive Housing vouchers. If that's what we put on here, they are not meant for anyone except veterans, homeless veterans.
And are veterans now receiving those? That would no longer receive them if we moved them all to that area?
At, at this time, I have two-hundred-and-fifty-one unleased vouchers, unused vouchers. So, the answer would be no. At this time, I have the capacity to, for two-hundred-and-fifty vouchers to, to be leased up. I have to go back and look and see, you know, and projects out some use coming up. So, I, I can't guarantee that two-hundred-and-fifty are going to be open when this RFP comes through, but there would be probably more than twenty-five.
You just confused me. Say that again.
So, I do have two-hundred-and-fifty that are unleased right now. So, if we use up to two-hundred-and-fifty, no one else would lose their housing. Now, they would lose an opportunity, though, these are housing choice vouchers. The two-hundred-and-fifty are housing choice vouchers. And we're selecting to make them project-based. So, I'm committing to project-based twenty-five of them so that they would be connected with this development.
Right.
So, we would lose twenty-five voucher ability for, for folks to go out and find housing somewhere else. Those two-hundred-and-fifty vouchers, housing choice vouchers, are for veterans to go find housing wherever they want to live. So, that's the only change it would be. They would have to go there. Twenty-five of them would have to go to this site only.
Okay, so, Chris, how many units will this be?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, we don't know yet. It depends what the, how the RFPs are submitted. So, as they come in, you know, there could be several hundred units that come onto this site. It could be a hundred, it could be two-hundred. When you look at a site of this size and scope and what could be built while still maintaining the, the, you know, the elements of the site and, and mixed use and mixed income on the site, between a hundred and two-hundred units would not be, would not be unusual for us to see on this site. So, perhaps, as, as we're having this discussion, maybe a way to word the RFP that might be beneficial on the mixed income and, and mixed workforce. We have our twenty-five that are dedicated to this particular site and others could be used as well. But what if a part of the RFP, a, a concept for the council to consider would be, then we say our thirty percent that we're requiring of workforce or affordable housing with a preference to veterans, then gets us to the twenty-five units plus another thirty percent that are on that site. So, we've had the benefit of the veterans' vouchers and that gets a, could get the council a well-rounded workforce project on the site, whether teachers, preference to veterans, and others who are in the site and creating a very nice project in downtown that covers both our affordable on our veteran's side and our workforce on our veterans' and, and other side, creating a nice mixed-use project.
Actually, I like that idea. I would suggest that we include that.
Mayor? So, when the land was given to the city of Phoenix on a ninety-nine year lease, it was done for the veterans. That's what it was done for. When we have two-hundred-and-fifty-one available vouchers that are out there, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-one veterans that don't have a home somewhere. So, all I was saying is just that whatever is available, that they would have to give a preference to those veterans first. And I think it's very simple. I don't want to overcomplicate it. Anyone that knows me wants to bring it very simple. So, if there are two-hundred-and-fifty veterans out there, they get the vouchers first. They get to be able to use the housing first. It's an easy thing for a developer to do. This is what I do, it's my industry. So, what I'm just saying is that we stay with what it was intended to be used for. We keep the American Legion there on a ninety-nine year lease that is done with a deed restriction. And then, what we do is we just basically put in there that the, if we have available vouchers, then the military veterans get to use it. I will support under that if the maker of the motion would be willing to put that language in there on a friendly motion.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, if I, I just want to make sure that I, I clarify what, what you said. So, what you're saying is the two-hundred-and-fifty available vouchers, this would be a voucher project for the site that's developed, so all two-hundred-and-fifty?
If they decide to. A, a veteran may decide that that may not be where they want to live. Again, that gives them the first priority to be able to look at that. Right now, we have two-hundred-and-fifty veterans, two-hundred-and-fifty-one veterans that need a home. We don't, that we have available. They haven't found a place yet. This gives them an alternative. They may choose not to be there. But that, there'd be a preference for those individuals that choose that location.
Councilman DeCiccio, as we take it out for an RFP, the vouchers are part of what the RFP would be so that the, whoever's bidding would know that what they're bidding on is the two-hundred-and-fifty vouchers as they build. I just want to make sure, okay?
That's available.
Okay.
That's two-fifty today, maybe three-hundred tomorrow. Who knows?
And the, the second piece is a point of clarification, is that as we take the RFP out, we can have it, a requirement that it provide veteran services, that it provide community services for veterans. We can't specifically state one veterans' organization.
It's a preference.
Vice Mayor Waring?
So, so I think you said before, you, you don't know how many actual spaces there will be. You kind of know how many vouchers you think you have, but you don't know how many rooms a proposer would include in the project. Is that fair?
Mayor Vice Mayor Waring, that's correct.
So, if they read the two-hundred-and-fifty, I, I just, I guess I'll just give an example. I would hate to have someone who was going to propose a awesome two-hundred-room facility. Now, it's like, ah, two-fifty, I got to expand it, I got to change it around. I'm not going to bid. Will we still get smaller but nice proposals? And then, we would have vouchers left over. Are you reading this as if we have to have at least two-hundred-and-fifty rooms and above? Because I don't think that's what, that's not, I don't think that's what's being meant. But I'm afraid that might be how you're interpreting it, so I wanted to make sure.
So, Mayor and members of the council, I want to clarify on that. There are two-hundred-and-fifty unleased vouchers right now. That does not mean that they are available for project basing for this project when this RFP comes through. We have commitments out there. I'm asking staff, I'm trying to text right now at the table, how much we have committed out there. I believe we have already committed up to fifty or a hundred of those, two-hundred-and-fifty. So, I, I can't make a commitment at this table of two-hundred-and-fifty vouchers would be available specifically for this project. Probably more than twenty-five. So, you know, I, I can't say two-hundred-and-fifty. So, I don't want everybody stuck on that number at this table or at this meeting.
Right. I think, I think, at least in my case, I was using it just as a sort of a benchmark. But that's good information. So, somewhere between twenty-five and two-hundred-and-fifty is the magic number we'll hit on. It may wind up being more vouchers than actual available space in this project, in which case the vouchers would roll back over to who they were intended for, to be used in other facilities. Is that clear? I think that's about as clear as I can.
Yep, and, and let me see if I can repeat that back. Then, what the, the concept that we're discussing would be a hundred percent VASH-based voucher development on the site?
I guess that's not, I don't, no, I would say...
Oh, that's not what it is.
I don't, yeah, okay. So, that gets back to what I was asking earlier. So, if she comes back and says the number's a hundred-and-fifty, I'm just making up that number, don't worry, a hundred-and-fifty. If somebody comes in with a awesome two-hundred, they shouldn't be limited to a hundred-and-fifty then. You see what I'm saying? I mean, there could be two-hundred spaces... I mean, there could be 200 spaces, but only 150 vouchers. I don't think we were trying to limit it to the number of vouchers. We want to have a good project. We want to use the vouchers for this purpose that are available. We understand we can't double-dip on the vouchers, so if they're already committed somewhere else, then they're committed somewhere else.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Waring, let me...
And we'll get that number whenever she can count the number.
Right. Let me, and so now I, sorry, I think I understand now. So what it would be, what you're proposing, is that the project would build to the projects that the Housing Department can make available as project-based vouchers for this project, those would be listed in the RFP, that number. It's somewhere between the 25 and the number, and we would list those. The balance could be work, would be workforce and market rate. Somebody comes in with an awesome project.
Something else, yes.
Yeah. I understand.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I think she answered the question, because I was looking at Cindy in the sense of, could we look at the vouchers that are uncommitted? So you would be able then, you would know, not right now, but after this meeting, you would be able to say, this is the many vouchers, this is how many vouchers are committed. And the ones that are not committed then could go towards this project.
Yes. Mayor and members of the Council, Councilwoman Pastor, we could actually, we could do that. Once I go back and confirm how many we have uncommitted, we could commit those to this RFP and say up to that many vouchers. And the proposer may not take all of those. They may take some of them and do a different mix. So yes, we could do that.
That works.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
So just clarification. So we just want to make sure that the veterans are going to take advantage of the housing. And if it's possible to put a percentage, are we allowed to do that, saying that 60% or 50% or the majority would go to veterans and workforce housing? And those that need the vouchers, then we can supply those if we, if it's available, right?
Mayor, Councilwoman Noakowski, absolutely. This council can put that percentage on this to say that it is 50%, 60%, 30% workforce or affordable housing with a preference to veterans and up to this number of VASH vouchers are available that are project-based, should they use them?
I would be, I would be happy with 60%.
Let's do it.
And that basically, depending on what the RFP comes in, if it's a 100 unit or 200 unit, 200-plus, then at least we're securing 60 units, my suggestion.
At least 60%. That, the maker of the motion, again, at least 60% be directed toward veterans.
I'm good if it, if you guys are sure you can implement that.
And we have...
Ed, that's...
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I missed what you said.
Maybe, maybe Sal, maybe you should repeat it, or Noakowski.
Oh, at least 60% of the housing units are to be directed toward veterans. I think that's a good compromise. I think we have a great opportunity here. We've talked about it, now it's time for us to act on it. We have an opportunity to actually take care of those veterans that have protected us all these years, in our entire lives, and now it's our turn to give them something back and something to scale of this. I think it's going to be quite significant. And the fact that we're also going to be deed restricting, that a veterans-related organization, can't say American Legion, but veterans-related organization is going to be there for the next 99 years or whatever we do in the sale, I think is going to be fantastic and allows us to give very large opportunity now to those veterans that have protected us. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
It's preference, right?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we do have to say a preference to veterans.
And that's the way I wrote it, so that's why I'm asking.
Bob Graham.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and council members. Good to see you again. My name is Bob Graham. My address is 351 West Portland Street here in Phoenix. I'm a historical architect and also a longtime member of the Central City Village Planning Committee, although I'm not representing the committee today. I also, more relevant to today, I serve as President of the Grand Avenue Members Association, also known as Gamma, which of course represents the Grand Avenue area, which includes the Post property. And I'm also happen to be co-author of the National Register nomination that showed that American Legion Post Number One is a very important historic property to the city of Phoenix. So I just have a couple of points I like, I would hope you would consider as we go forward. The first is this. I believe that as a city, Phoenix has a very strong record of historic preservation. We've come a long way in the last 30 years, and particularly in promoting historic preservation to the private sector. We have demolition moratoriums, we have historic preservation overlays, and such things as that. But I believe that the city has a, has an obligation or a responsibility to really lead the way in that endeavor. When you have a city-owned property like this, how can you expect the private sector to put up with preservation overlays and being required to preserve historic buildings if the city itself will not preserve the historic buildings it owns? So I think to do otherwise would tend to undermine our historic preservation efforts in the future. Secondly, as an architect and preservationist, I would like you to know that respectful rehabilitation of the Post property is, in my opinion, perfectly feasible. There's no reason that we can't rehabilitate that property and activate the empty portions of the site and increase the density and do the things that we need to do to make economic sense, while still preserving the things that make the building an important historic building. So therefore, I'd just like to ask that the requirement be added to the request for proposals, that the developer preserve the historic building without destroying its historical integrity, that the draft language of just in, considering incorporating elements of the building is really meaningless when you come to preservation. And the idea of an interpretive feature as a substitute for preservation, I think, is also unacceptable. Historic preservation is about preserving the place, not the memory. And an interpretive feature may as well be a gravestone, reading, "Here once lay," American Legion Post Number One. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Joan Keltner.
Mayor Gallego, city council members, good evening. My name is Joan Keltner. I live at 318 West Linwood in the Roosevelt Historic District, which is the neighbor to the east of this site. I have only a few things to say at this point because of your excellent discussion so far and how you're covering the housing issue and the veterans issue. Councilman DeCecio, I could not agree with you more that it should be 100% veterans. I would like to throw in another small segment of the population, just to confuse your wording. When I spoke with Lisa Glow, who is the CEO of CAS, she said that last year they saw at least 500 veterans who came through CAS because they didn't have a place to live. And this is not just people with psychotic or psychiatric, psychiatric or substance abuse problems. It's, they simply didn't have a place. We are losing more and more affordable housing. So the affordable housing issue obviously is important, but a significant portion of those veterans were seniors. Seniors are losing housing which they can afford at an alarming rate. So if we can't say that we can put all affordable units here towards veterans, I think there is legitimate legal wording that could perhaps include more veterans who are seniors. And that would also help them a great deal, because at CAS, they see seniors coming in who need nothing but housing, and they're not finding anywhere. They're looking at two-year wait lists for seniors. That's just horrible. I would like to add a couple of other things about the historic. One thing that I want to see specifically mentioned, added to the buildings, and the buildings need to be saved, especially the one with the bar restaurant, because that's part of the historic essence of the South, is the flagpole. That flagpole was that original, not the original one, I'm sure, but it's like a landmark downtown. It's so tall. I think it should be part of the plan, and perhaps that could be included in the RFP. And the last thing I want to say is that you are going to be setting up a panel, which will include citizens to review the RFPs. I would like to offer myself to be on that panel, as well as the speakers you have heard so far. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an additional card, not wishing to speak in favor of the proposal. Question for staff, could you talk about the flagpole? And then we also got some different comments from downtown stakeholders about gateway and the fact that it is a gateway to our downtown, so gateway features.
Mayor, absolutely. As we have been out in the community, the flagpole was one of the most significant things that we heard about. And in fact, I look out my window at that flagpole each and every day, so I really enjoy looking at the flagpole. That, as we're moving forward, should council choose to move this RFP forward, maintaining that flagpole will be significant for this property. So we will make that a requirement of the RFP to maintain the flagpole on that property. We also did hear from the community as we went out over the past few years, visiting with the community about the potential for redevelopment of this property. And they did discuss how important this was as a gateway element into the west side of downtown and into Grand Avenue. And that is also listed in our creation of place for points as creating that gateway element coming into the downtown and into Grand Avenue.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Yes.
Any additional council member questions or comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
I just want clarity on the whole motion.
And we do, Councilwoman asked for clarity on the motion. We do have a council meeting next week, so if we wanted to continue the item and make sure that we spell it out explicitly so that everyone is familiar, that's also an option.
Can I ask a question?
Vice Mayor.
So to that end, I was going to wrap up. Do you know what we intend? I can try to restate, but...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I believe I know what you intend, and we always find it helpful as staff. We go back and watch the video recordings and work towards making sure we meet the video recording. As I understand it, this is a project that we would take out for RFP. We would, as first, we would have a 99-year restriction, requiring affordable and workforce housing on now up to 60% of the site, and that we maintain a veterans' presence in community and services for the veterans with a 99-year deed restriction on the site. The site is to be listed on the RFP as either for sale or for lease, and that we would have elements or portions of the building considered under part of the proposal, under the concept to activate the site, additional points would be given if they maintain features and portions of the site. Finally, through the conversation today, as we've had it, it would be up to 60% of affordable or workforce housing with a preference to veterans, and the available VASH vouchers on the project would be applied to the project. We know today that's a minimum of 25 vouchers, and we will work with the Housing Director to identify what of those are available. The VASH vouchers do not limit the proposers in the number of units that they could fit on the site, should they choose to bring in additional workforce and market rate.
Thank you. I think that last, that's pretty good. I think, maybe it was an excellent discussion after all. I was skeptical when that nice, overly timed speaker was, we were kind of all over the place. But can I ask one question, one of those little detailed questions? What if, so let's say there's 100 units, then 60 would be set aside. What if we don't have 60 vouchers?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Waring, the vouchers would be available, but then there's additional of workforce housing. There are some of our veterans, as we've discussed today, that are able to afford a portion of the rent. They're not necessarily needing VASH vouchers. They can afford a certain level of rent, and that workforce housing could meet that requirement.
So it's not necessarily limited, the 60% is not necessarily limited to how many vouchers we have.
That's not my understanding.
There's other mechanisms. And I just want to make sure some, we didn't get some great project, and then somehow there was some technicality, we couldn't meet what we'd passed, so we have to throw it out or something.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, no, that wasn't my understanding. My understanding was up to 60% on workforce or affordable housing with a preference to veterans, and if we didn't have those all available, we'd still meet that requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I don't mean to belabor the vouchers, but vouchers, there is a choice for the veteran, right? They don't have to say, I want to live here. If you give them a voucher, they can go anywhere that we honor those, correct? Because I still want, I still want them to have choices.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Stark, the, as I said, the 250 unleased vouchers right now are choice vouchers.
Okay.
So as the Veterans Administration identifies homeless veterans, they give them these vouchers and they can choose where to live. If we pick 25 of these or more to place on this, on this property, then they can choose to come live there, or they can take the choice voucher. It's their choice.
So they still have a choice, because I, I mean, not everyone, no offense, not everyone wants to live in District 7.
Oh.
I suspect there's some veterans, they may want to live in other parts of the city, so I want to make sure they still have that choice.
Yes, that is correct. They will still have a choice.
Oh, Mayor.
Councilman DeCecio.
Just another point of clarification. So just to be very clear, if we have 100 units and 60 veterans want to live there, they get first, they get first right of refusal there, right? They get to be able to choose that first, first preference, correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, you're correct.
Okay. I want to make sure that's on the record, because this went through quite a bit, and you're amazing that to remember all that. You're like Sam in my office. I mean, he has got a photographic memory. He never has to take a note. I don't know how you do it, but I wish I could teach myself how to do that. But yeah, it's going to be 60% will be geared toward veterans. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guadalupe.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Item 73.
Now we start to divide.
73? I move approval. Second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion on that. We're on item number 73, right?
Correct.
First of all, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we don't approve the two-month extension. We've been approving the extension for over a year now, and I think it's time for us to make a decision if we're going to, we're going to have a presence in Mexico or not. And I think not having a presence for two months during the summertime really wouldn't hurt us that, that much. I think that we can work with the state office if there's any meetings set up in the near future. And besides that, I think that we put some language in the RFP to make sure that there's some economic developments that are included in that, in that's, in that RFP. And I just really want to make sure that we get our fair share of businesses, just like the other cities are throughout the United States. And I've been on many of those trips, and it's mostly meeting politicians. What I like to see more of is businesses meeting businesses, bringing those businesses here to Phoenix and opening shop here in the United States. So if we can actually kind of push that way, and that's why I'm asking for a no on this extension.
Great. We had a substitute motion. Did we have a second?
Yes. Didn't we have a second?
Yes.
Nobody second?
For which one?
On this item, 73.
I second 73.
Yeah. We have a motion to second. I made it, and she seconded.
He was the sub.
Oh, no.
And Councilwoman Williams wanted to comment.
If I understand right, Chris, this has already gone out in the process. They have been recognized as the ones that can do the best job for us. And now there's a challenge, and that's the reason we need a 60-day delay or extension, is you're not going out for a new RFP, right?
Correct.
And so this has gone through the process, but now we have to accommodate whoever challenged it, let them have a fair hearing, and if they succeed in their challenge, then they would be brought back as the person that would do this. Otherwise, it would remain with Alvarez.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, we did, this council did authorize us to issue an RFP, and the Councilman Noakowski's comments, the staff listened to council's comments that we were protocol-heavy in the first five years of our office. So the new RFP was issued to require business-to-business, foreign direct investment, new development. It requires, it requires law firms, it requires funding opportunities. So that was the new RFP, went as the council had decided, moving forward in more of a business-to-business as opposed to protocol.[1786.15] as opposed to protocol. We did receive five proposals, two of which were disqualified. Three did move forward, and we do have a recommended proposer that we were prepared to bring forward to council. We have received a protest by one of our valid proposers, and then we did receive a second protest from one of the disqualified proposers. We are in the process of responding to those, to those protests. But the process that we have set forth as a city, we respond to their protest, and then they have seven days to appeal our response to their protest. That would take us past council, closing for the summer, if you will, on July 3. To keep our Mexico offices open and operating, as we do have several missions, we ran one last week. We have several of our businesses that we're working with, with our Mexico offices now. To keep them open for the summer, we're asking for an extension of the existing contract while we sort out the existing RFP and come back to you at your first available meeting in September to bring the recommended proposer forward, depending on the outcome of the protest.
So this just keeps us open through the summer until the matter's resolved.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, that's correct.
Okay. Then I'm very comfortable in going forward with what's being recommended. I think it's important we keep it open. I know you and I had a previous conversation about the number of businesses that have connected or are really interested, and I would hate to see any 60-day closure so that they weren't stifled in any way from doing business in Phoenix. So...
So Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Noakowski?
So is, so you're saying that we don't have enough time to respond to the protest, right?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, we have time to respond to the protest, but they receive a seven-day appeal on our response to the protest. It's the appeal process that would take us past July 3.
And this process has been going over for a year now. We've been expen, how, when was the extension of this first extension happen?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the original RFP that was issued, or the original procurement that was issued was in 2013. It called for two, first two years, which took us through 2015. And then there were three one-year extensions by the contract that the council approved in 2013, which brings us to the end of July of this year.
So we had three other extensions, and this will be the fourth, right?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, that's correct. They were the annual extensions that were called for in the original contract that was created.
All right. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and second Councilman Noakowski's motion.
Okay. So we have a substitute motion to, the motion is to deny the, deny items 73. We have a motion and a second. So we would vote first on Councilman Noakowski's motion. Right. Okay. Any further discussion? Are we ready for two vote? Okay. Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Wardado?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yeah.
Stark?
Yeah.
Williams?
No.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. So motion passes six to three. Item 79 is related to ammunition. Councilmember Garcia, we have...
Moved to approve item 79?
We have a motion and a second. We have, I'm sorry, we have a motion. We have a motion and we have a second from Councilwoman Williams. We have one card wishing to speak and a very large number in support. Would you like to hear the card first or comment? Counsel?
I'll just comment. I just have a question. So the question here is how, how is it determined, the need? So what is the need and how is the need determined specifically because of the incident that happened a couple of years ago, or a year ago, at the convention center with the Trump rally? I just need more on how the, this amount and what the need is for the department, and what are the expectations, or why, why order this?
Mayor Gallego, Councilmember Garcia, what this item would allow us to do is use a state cooperative contract to purchase items that we already have. I want to be clear, this is replenishing items that we have. These aren't new items. And these items are less lethal products. They'll be utilized by our special assignments unit, our downtown operations unit, and our firearms training detail. Some of the items that are specifically requested include flashbang diversionary devices, as the name would imply. The device emits a bright flash followed by a loud bang, meant, meant to be a diversionary device, as I said. Chemical agents, riot control agents, less lethal impact weapons as well. What these items allow us to do is, when it is appropriate to do so, not use such items as batons, which some other agencies use, which our officers in these situations don't even carry, or use lethal force in those situations. This is an opportunity for us to de-escalate those encounters, limit injury, and limit, subsequent to that, also perhaps any property damage that may occur.
Replacing, you mean that they're, they're expired, or what does that mean?
Mayor Gallego, Councilmember Garcia, perhaps the proper term would be to replenish what we have.
Okay.
Here, I have a question.
Councilmember, Councilman Michael Noakowski?
Chief, if we didn't replenish these, the supply, what would be left in case of there was a, a situation where we would have to use some type of restrain?
Mayor Gallego, Councilman Noakowski, we would run the risk of not having these tools available to us.
Mayor, I want to make sure that we're really clear on this, though, too. The first sentence here requests the authorization, authorizes the city manager a designated need to allow the use of the State of Arizona Cooperative Contract with Diamondback Police Supply Company, Inc. for the supply of ammunition products statewide. It doesn't limit it just to this contract. It limits, it just says we're allowed to use the statewide, which I'm a strong supporter of. I want to make sure we're clear on that. It allows us to be able to purchase in the future as well, correct? That's what the sentence is. That's the way it's worded.
So Mayor Gallego, Councilman DeCecio, I want to make sure I understand your question. This is allowing us to purchase up to $425,000 of these items. It would be the aggregate value of the contract.
It says this aggregate contract, this contract, but it doesn't say that here. It says utilization of the State of Arizona Cooperative Contract for ammunition products statewide. I want to make sure that we're able to do this on a continuing basis if we need to. That's what it says here.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, there's two, two aspects of it. One is for us to be able to use the contract, that it's a valid contract procured appropriately, and that contract would be with Diamondback Police Supply. The second part of this is that we would have authorization to spend up to $425,000 on that contract. If the police department needed more, they would need to return to the council to get more payment authority above $425,000.
Correct. But we're able to go through the cooperative to do this.
Right.
That's correct. This would allow us to use the cooperative.
That's what I'm happy with.
It's just using the state contract, being able to go and use the state contract instead of our...
That is correct.
For any future purchase. I'm one of those guys that believes our police officers need to have bullets.
This is a five-year, this is a five-year contract term, and we, so we could use the contract for five years. If we need to use it for more than $425,000, we would have to return.
And I don't want to be politically correct here or anything else. I think our officers need to be armed. They need to be armed with bullets. They need to be armed with guns. They need to be armed with everything available in the tool chest. I don't want to sit here and sugarcoat it, because I want to be able to say directly what it is we need to be able to do, and this contract allows us to do that. I'm going to be supportive of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have 15, okay. Councilmember Garcia?
And so I believe the opposite. I think what we've seen in the last couple of months and in the last couple of years has proven that this police department is not able to properly use these weapons. We're in a lawsuit right now because of it. And so I would encourage that until we figure out the review board, the ad hoc committee, and get some actual implementation and, and policy to be able to better train the officers and be able to get through the problems we're having, that we do not support any more spending for, for the police department.
We have one card from the public wishing to speak, as well as 15 not wishing to speak, but in support of the item. The card wishing to speak is opposed, Luke Black.
Afternoon, council. My name is Luke. I'm a resident of District 5. I am speaking in opposition to this contract. I think it is immoral and irresponsible for you to continue to give additional ammunition to a department that has proven that it will use those against the residents of this city. And I would, so that, so I would just, I would just ask you to vote no on this, on this measure. Do not approve this. We do not, there is, is not significant protocol in place to assure that police officers even know how to use this equipment. I would also like to pivot off of that and comment to Mayor Gallego that you promised 30 days that you would begin to take action to rein in the Phoenix Police Department and their use of violence. You are now seven days into that, and you are going on vacation on July, after the July 3 vote. I recognize that you have called a meeting on July 2 to talk about implementation of the ad hoc committee to oversee police recommendations from the past 10 years, and that you have called a meeting to talk about the civilian review board. Just talking about those is not enough. You need to come prepared on July 3 with your timeline and your recommendations for this council to vote on for how you're going to implement both that ad hoc committee and that civilian review board. Please take us serious. Please take the violence of the, the Phoenix Police serious. We need real timeline. We need a real implementation process. You promised that, and this council owes it to the residents of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Oh, Mayor, go ahead.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Councilman DeCecio, and then Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. To that end, regarding whatever's going to happen, one, I believe that there is a false narrative occurring right now that these police officers are bad, and it's always qualified with, oh, we love our officers, but... And it's giving the impression that the City of Phoenix Police Department has done something wrong. They've done nothing wrong. As a matter of fact, as part of this, I want to make sure, and I believe, Ed, I love you and all, I think you're a good guy, but I think you're putting political pressure to fire those police officers. And I want to make sure that every communication between yourself and any politician, including myself, is documented, and any communication that you or your staff has with the police chief, expecting them to fire or do anything and give them direction other than what is coming out of it, I want that all documented. I want to know what's going to happen to those police officers. And I believe that there's a lot of pressure being put on you. I understand it. And I understand that the city's worried that something bad's going to happen in our city. You do not sacrifice one person for any reason. Never sacrifice somebody who's done the right thing. These are police officers. That means that they're required to do the right thing. And if you guys in the administration end of it do something wrong, then it's on your head. You guys will have done this. If you take a political move for any reason to hurt a police officer younger, smaller than you, lower than you, you will have to live with that for the rest of your life and your conscience. I love you guys, but I'll tell you what, I will go after, I will do whatever I have to do. I've already had this conversation with city staff. I'm going to let it out there. I did it already. I said, you do the right thing. You're police officers. That means you do nothing politically motivated at all. If these officers did something right, great. If they did something wrong, then you got to go after them, because that's your responsibility. But you're not going to do it for political reasons, and I want it all documented. Is that clear? Are we clear on that? Chief? Are we clear? Is it yes or a no?
Yes, sir.
Am I going to have a documentation of any communication that's made between city staff and the police department? If that's a yes or a no?
Mayor Gallego, Councilman DeCecio, yes.
Thank you. That's all I want to know. I'm voting yes on this.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor Waring, and then Councilwoman Pastore, and then we have an additional public comment.
Thanks. I appreciate it. So this is an item to basically give the police officers the tools to do their jobs. You know, when I talk to people in my district, which I did all weekend, and Monday and Tuesday night, you know, people, I think rightfully, are interpreting that the officers are doing, one, the best job that they can. It is an imperfect world. We are expecting perfection out of them. We can demand excellence, but expecting perfection is a fool's errand. It's not going to happen. They have incredibly high-stress jobs, which is almost, as I pointed out last week, almost never mentioned by speakers at that podium. It's never going to go perfectly, particularly the 90% or what is it, 89% of the five-year study that was in the Arizona Republic talked about people that you've had to shoot at, basically, being armed, sort of the insane circumstances with which the officers find themselves. It is very discouraging when, when I have to hear you guys being micromanaged like this. I don't think that's fair. I think people should understand if somebody is pointing a gun at you, it's just survival that's of interest. And frankly, I want the officers to go home to their families. If you're pointing a gun at an officer, you have to recognize something bad could happen. That shouldn't be something that has to be explained. We're trying to give them here non-lethal tools, by and large, to make sure that everybody gets home safe. But in those circumstances, we have to support the officers. The broad statements about, one was just made, but, but it was last week, it was murderers, rapists. The Gestapo one, I really thought was, it's pretty hard to go below the belt when you're talking about calling everybody a blanket statement that 3,000 people who are trying to serve the public are murderers. But then you go to a new low when you start talking about Gestapo. That's just, I don't even know what to make of that. But it's abhorrent, and it's wrong, and it's not something they should have to sit here and listen to. But they did, and I applaud them for their grace under fire, shall we say, verbal fire. I just, bottom line, I mean, it's got to be incredibly frustrating for them to hear this and be painted with a broad brush. Obviously, not all 3,000 officers roughly are perfect. We understand that. But, but to say that they, as a blanket statement, cannot handle these tools, well, they have thousands, tens of thousands, Assistant Chief Kirkland, do you know how many thousands of interactions the officers have with the public every year in the aggregate? That may not be a knowable number. I don't know.
Mayor Gallego, Vice Mayor Waring, we received approximately 2.3 million calls into our communications center last year with about 700,000 dispatch calls, in addition to all the other daily contacts that our officers have.
So I may have been wrong about this previous vote on the cameras. I might have been the only one who voted against that. I can't remember. But I voted against the cameras because the cost of the cameras is the equivalent, I think it was 44 officers, if memory serves. Those 44 officers would have had thousands of interactions with the public, giving directions, stopping crimes, saving lives, I'm sure administering CPR, and so forth. The cameras are used in these very few cases. Tragic though they are, I am not diminishing their importance, and I'm not saying in every single instance, the police department is right. But I do not believe any officer is going out trying to do something that's wrong. That, again, is ridiculous. There are occasions where I'm sure procedures aren't followed, and the department will address that. To the point about the current situation with the current officers, I think it is wrong to be out judging them in public. We are not professional, none of us up here are professional police officers, or know chapter and verse of what the standards are. But there are experts who will evaluate this and let us know. To Sal's point, it shouldn't be judged on political merits, but on the merits of the performance of the officers. It is easy to fly-spec one video that's truncated of one incident. How many times does that happen? It does happen a few times a year. Is it tragic? Sure, it is. But it's never going to be perfect when you have, what was the number, 2.3 million interactions? And we talk about a handful every year. I don't think that's a fair standard. I don't know how anybody looks themselves in the mirror and says, yep, that, that's the standard that I think they should live up to. It needs to be perfect. Under the circumstances that we've... to. It needs to be perfect under the circumstances that we've seen. I've got the reports for the last, I think it was 2016, 17 and a half of 18 in my office, a rather lengthy analysis of each shooting incidents, whether it was a fatal or not. I, I would say the vast majority, and I had written down notes, I probably should have just brought it, were the public called in, there's somebody with a gun running through our neighborhood, they're shooting, could you please help? What are the officers supposed to do? Imagine that's your neighborhood. I always try to sit back and imagine that it's mine. What would I want them to do? There's somebody with a gun who just committed an armed robbery or something. They're running towards my house. What would I want the officers to do? They've got seconds, instant, really, to react. We do it with soldiers too. Heck, they do it in the NFL with a lot less serious repercussions, but people microman, right? They just get all over the referees. Well, that's what we're doing here. I don't think that's fair. And I don't know how anybody would sit there and say that is fair. These guys are in life or death situations. The men and women on the force are trying to do a good job. They don't get paid a king's ransom and, and they're in incredibly stressful situations. And then boom, their reward, if they are arguably successful, depending on the outcome, is they get fly-spec. And frankly, I, I got to wonder, I, I, we don't do enough follow-up frankly, what happens to some of these officers in these situations after the thing is either adjudicated or the lawsuit is over or the standards board is done? You know, they got to live with that forever. Their names are out there forever. I don't think that's fair. And so I just wanted to say that. To, to say we're not going to give them the tools they need to stay alive, I think is fundamentally wrong. So, thank you.
Joe Clora.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. My name is Joe Clora. I'm a retired Phoenix Police Officer, 34 years. I hadn't planned on speaking until I heard some of the comments here today. It's very sad to see our city in this state, to be quite honest with you. And I thank you, Sal and Councilman Waring, with regards to your analysis, I think correct analysis of what we see here.
Yeah, they're going to screw those officers over and we got to stop them by getting them to document every conversation they have with city staff, Joe.
Much of this, I believe, is politically motivated in terms of the conversation. We just did $150,000 study on the 44 shootings that we had. And that narrative or that headline could just as easily read, "Phoenix Police Officers Face More Deadly Threats This Year Than In The Past." The fact is, those shootings, and this is a non-starter, when you start classifying police officers doing their jobs lawfully and justifiably as murderers, that does not help the conversation. That is not constructive dialogue. I know for a fact that Britt London has asked to sit down and talk with you, Mr. Councilman Garcia. I'm going to leave my card here with the same invitation. Call us if you want some grievances, let's talk. But you can't sit up here and characterize police officers as murderers for doing their job. I can tell you right now, I, as a former, that is a non-starter with us. There's nobody in this community that cares more about the people of this community than the men and women that go out there every day and put their lives on the line to serve this community. We're not perfect, neither are you. But we're not going away, you, the community's not going away. If you really have an intent to try to fix things, then sit down and talk with the boots on the ground and let's find out how to do that. But let's stop the rhetoric and the insulting insinuation that police officers are murderers because they're not. Thank you.
Thank you. We are working hard in Phoenix to have the best department possible. Our goal is for every officer to come home safely and every member of the public. And we will continue to make investments to strengthen our police force. We have no additional cards on this item. If you'd like to come forward and testify, please state your name and fill out a card once you are done.
Hi, I wasn't going to speak. My name is Andrea Max. I am a dispatcher for the Phoenix Police Department and I am very proud of that. And to have Councilman Garcia sit up there and say that our officers are bad, or these people say that our officers are bad, it's heartbreaking to me. I take that home. And when this video came out, we sat there in our dispatch center and we took calls from these people threatening to kill our family, our family. I did nothing. I did nothing to anybody. My family did nothing. These people called us with the worst calls that you can ever imagine, threatening our officers on the street, threatening us personally. What did we do? Why are they so okay with this? That's not okay. We want to give our officers more ammunition to do things less lethal so that they don't have to do this. And you want to sit up there and say, no, I'm going to say no. They're trying to do their job in a way that you want them to do it with less lethal. But did anybody see the video with the girl and the husband we're stealing? No, no one saw that. It's just the video of our officers trying to do their job when this vehicle fled from police. We have to talk to them. We are the ones that are their lifeline that have to get them back up. We are right there with them and it's emotional for us as well. And then to go and sit on the phones and be called all these names that, by people that are just so concerned. I've never been called so many names in my life and I'm a dispatcher, for Christ's sake. That's ridiculous. These people act like they're so good. They don't even understand what they're doing. They don't even know the whole story. So for you to say, no, our officers don't need more, less lethal weapons, it's, it's not even thinking about the whole picture. That's all they're asking for. They're very well-trained. They know their job. I know this because I work with them every day. I sit there and I talk to them. I go on calls with them. I take calls for them. I talk to citizens, citizens that call us and ask us for help because they can't control the situation. So what did my officers do? They go out there and they help them to the very best of their ability. And then these same people call us and want to put us down and threaten my family. And my family, they don't even know my family. They don't even know me. It's ridiculous and it's heartbreaking to all of us dispatchers that have to listen to this. It's not just the officers on the street that they're threatening. It's the dispatchers, it's the jail staff, it's anybody who works for the Phoenix Police. It's code enforcement. It's all of us. They do this to all of us. It's, it has to stop. You guys have to stop this.
Thank you. And we'd encourage anyone who receives a threat, please report it.
Oh, Mayor? Mayor, I've, I've, I've put in a request to get copies of those tapes and I still haven't received them. So I think members of the media and others would be very happy to hear what's happening behind, you know, that for whatever reason that hasn't been released, I'd like to know why. Those calls, there are dispatchers in particular, the threats, the, all the negative stuff that occurred. I'd like to get copies of that. I'd like to make it available to the public. And from my end, again, I'm going to just repeat this, Ed. There, one officer at the lowest level, even if starting, is more important than any of our political careers, period. You do not protect us and what we want to do or anybody else over the, the life and the career of one officer. And you guys, you got to do the right thing. You got to do it. You're police officers. You're not going to bow to political pressure. That's all I want to know. And that you're going to do the right thing. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, my name is Leonard Clark. I was born here in Phoenix. And first of all, nobody is calling, at least there are people that might say, all the police are bad. There are people that say, all the police are perfect. Neither is true, okay? All right? First of all, I'm not one of those people who hate the police, okay? But we have to acknowledge the fact that we are one of the last major cities in the United States of America that does not have a civilian review board with regulatory powers, despite what the police chief says. Now, I, I thank the officers who've given their lives, officers who have sacrificed, but there is a systemic problem going on. There is a cancer. As the Reverend Stewart, Warren Stewart Senior said at the church, there is a cancer. I believe in unions, but you have to police your own. Because if you don't police your own, then people get desperate. It's a cycle of hate. So I'm not going to fall into this trap where, oh, the police are perfect, or, oh, the police are all evil. But we do have a problem. You could watch those videotapes and you know, you could see going up to African-American citizens that way and treating them that way. And you know what? If you want to try them, Phoenix Police Department, you all keep bringing up that they're criminals. Well, why don't you go to, why don't you guys charge them if they're such criminals? It's not in the police report. How about the officer who left out? Oh, I helped him spread his legs. He did a leg sweep. That is inexcusable. Police your own. Thank you for sacrificing your lives, but stop killing innocent people, okay? We're asking you to police your own. So you know what, Councilman DeCicio, it's easy for you and all of you to attack Councilman Garcia, but I'll tell you what, thank you for standing up because we have not had a citizens review board. Mayor, you need to do this. Thank you again for your service, but understand that you're not policing your own. This is like the Tefers in the 1970s with Jimmy Hoffa. You are supposed to be enforcers of the law. You're not judge, jury and executioner. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alfie Saffa. I'm a USMC veteran and I just want to let you know that, first off, I don't see color when I see people. I look at everyone as creation of God and I see everyone as having the image of God in them. And so when I see what the police officers going out to protect us, the first thing I think of is this bill that's before us and them needing to replenish non-lethal. I think of my dad saying that common sense isn't very common. They said, well, what's going to happen if we don't replenish it? Well, what do we use if we don't have the non-lethal, they said? Well, we, we use the batons and we use lethal. So I guess, you know, if we don't have the non-lethal, let's use common sense. What's left? Hmm. Hmm. So I, I kind of want them to have the non-lethal stuff available so that more people, both police officers and citizens, make it home alive. That's the whole reason for non-lethal. I'm just kind of saying, you know, let's kind of give this some common sense, people. Think about, well, the whole reason for having the non-lethal. Let's put the whole video of all the things that's going on in our culture right now behind us and go, what are we trying to prepare our cops and have this non-lethal tool in their belt for? So that citizens go home alive. So that they don't go home in caskets when there's other options available. And if that means that they need to get more training, well, get them the tools and get them the training. Don't say, I'm not going to get them the ammunition or I'm not going to get them the non-lethal stuff. They need that. They're out there protecting us. They're the first responders. Like they said, when there's a man coming down your neighborhood, South Phoenix or North Phoenix or wherever, you're going to be calling the police. Hey, there's somebody coming down my neighborhood with a gun. Help me. And so let's give them the tools to protect us. And it doesn't matter
Thank you.
what color they're, they are. We all want to go home alive.
Thank you for your testimony.
And we all want to be protected.
Roll call. DeCicio? Garcia?
No.
Guardado?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'll be voting yes on this. It's because it's replenishing non-lethal ammo. And I think it's a tool that we need to use at first before using lethal weapons. So I'll be supporting this. Also, I want to thank you, Mayor. I heard some comments out there, but I know as the Chair of Public Safety, you asked me to block off my summer so that we can meet and figure, figure the situation out. I know that we have some meetings set up with individuals from the community, from our police force to community leaders. So I just want to make sure that people know that. You're not just sitting here not doing something. I mean, every day, there's some meeting going on regarding the issue that you all are discussing. We, as the City of Phoenix, are trying to figure out how to bring our communities together. And I say community, it is the residents, the police and all of our staff in the City of Phoenix, how we can live and make this one of the best-run cities in the, in the country. And I believe that we talk about self-policing, but I also think we as residents, as a father of six children, we need to self-police our own selves too. Our neighbors, we know those individuals that are up to bad things in our neighborhoods. So we need to be a part of the solution too and be a part of those community block watch and neighborhood patrols and even the hard stuff is trying to help our own family members when they're in hard times also, right, with counseling and all that. So I think there's a, there's a fair share of self-policing all around that we need to do and it's hard. It's hard. And we talk about police officers. We talked about ourselves as community members. We need to figure out that common ground and how we can build from that. So with that, I'm going to be voting yes, Mayor.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Williams?
Yes.
Waring? Gallego? Yes. Item passes eight to one. And thank you to Councilman Noakowski. I know that all of the elected officials here are working very hard on public safety. This is the issue we spend the most time on and will continue to work on to build a safer city. Next, we turn to item 81. Vice Mayor has made a motion. Councilwoman Williams has seconded it. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item 81 is for ordinance number G6602 and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code, Chapter 4, Article 1, Section 4-1, Chapter 23, Article 1, Sections 23-1 and 23-15, Article 10, Sections 23-120 and 23-128, Chapter 24, Article 2, Sections 24-43 and 24-51F, Chapter 31, Article 7, Section 31-8B, and to establish a pilot dockless electric stand-up scooter program by adding Sections 31-85 and 31-86 and amending Chapter 36, Article 1, Section 36-1, Article 2, Sections 36-29, 36-40.1 and 36-40.2, and to establish regulations for electric stand-up scooters by adding Article 15 and amending Article 16, Section 36-403, and amending Chapter 39, Article 2, Section 39-7A, and establishing a sunset date.
Nice work. We, we have eight cards marked in favor and four cards wishing to speak. If council members are okay, we'll start with the cards. We will, Leonard Clark followed by Nuri Baray.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark, born right here in the City of Phoenix. Thank you to all the veterans out there and all those who make it possible for me to be, to speak because freedom isn't free. But that being said, I'm, I'm in strong support of you having this exploratory type of experiment on e-scooters since we have Chevron executives, you know, who hang out at the Corporation Commission trying to limit other electrical companies from setting up charging stations so that we can have more electric cars so that our civilization won't end in 12 years. But gee, at least we'll have electric scooters until the Chevron executives come down to the City of Phoenix. But I know you, you will not cave. They will not be able to influence you. So yes, I'm with electric scooters. They make a heck of a lot less of a carbon footprint than cars. And if you think that, well, Mr. Clark, bikes, they might be stopping people from walking and using bicycles and that would actually still cause more. How many people in this huge area in this heat, a lot of people aren't going to ride those bikes. So electric scooters are the way to go. We are in a sixth, fifth or sixth, whatever extinction event. And nobody seems to be paying attention except our young people and a few old hippies like myself. Thank you. I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego, members of City Council. Wanted to thank all of the hard work that staff has done on this issue and keep it short and sweet. I'm in favor for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Lelmore, do you wish to speak? And we have many experts, including people from scooter companies who are available for council questions, if council members have any. Councilwoman Pastor. Is that Daniel?
Sorry, you guys have the front all roped off.
And are you Daniel?
I'm Daniel Limoney. It's pronounced Limoney for the record.
And I'm sorry, you're Daniel with?
Limoney.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Um, I'm in favor of the scooter program, however, as it is on paper, I, I don't think it'll really serve the citizens of Phoenix like it needs to serve the citizens of the City of Phoenix. Um, I, I live in District Six in the Arcadia area, around Forty-Fourth Street and Oak. We get electric scooters in that area because they drift over from, from Scottsdale, is pretty much Scottsdale adjacent over there. A lot of people rely on them as transportation, and, uh, the geofencing that's proposed to, to limit scooters to only a two-square, a less than two-square-mile part of downtown Phoenix, I, I think will completely make the program not effective, not, not like it could be. Keep in mind that two-square miles, it doesn't have grocery store, it doesn't have a hospital. People need transportation to go places, and, and I think you should seriously reconsider the, uh, geofencing, um, and, and, and make it, make it like it is in Scottsdale, make it like it is in Tempe, make it like it is in, you can get anywhere in those three cities by scooter. You don't have to drive and you don't have to wait a period of time for the bus. Um, also, um, I, I, I did attend the, um, subcommittee meeting, so I've seen the whole presentation as far as like parking, and, and I think the city is looking at spending money that doesn't need to be spent on these special parking zones. There's already a place to park scooters. It's called a bike rack. Um, I rode here on Lime Electric Scooter, and it's at the bike rack adjacent to the, to the City Council building. Tax dollars don't need to be spent on special parking for a vehicle that already has parking available. Anyway, that's pretty much what I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Councilwoman Pastor, did you have comments?
I just had comments. I just wanted to thank, uh, city staff and leadership and all my colleagues in, uh, reviewing the scooter pilot program. It's taken us, uh, several weeks, maybe months, uh, to deliver this program and put our citizen safety first, and I just, uh, I'm really happy at where it landed. I know not everybody is happy in the sense of the geofencing, but it is a pilot program to see, uh, what, what the impact it has in downtown and also, uh, due to, uh, we have special parking due to the fact of the lessons learned from other cities and scooters just being, uh, parked anywhere. And so, uh, we did take, uh, deep deliberation, uh, and it went through two committees, uh, to look at this, and so I really appreciate your patience and really appreciate, uh, the scooter companies and understanding our due diligence, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams.
I, I too want to sta, uh, thank staff and, uh, actually the vendors because my concern was over our liability, and you spent a lot of time, uh, you worked through it, and I think we're in a good place to go forward to test this. So I thank everybody who was involved, and I'm ready to see the pilot project soon.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, we, um, listened a lot to the community and to the industry. The pilot, and the majority of the pilot program is actually in District Seven and Eight, and, um, it's mostly in the downtown area. And we listened to all the concerns, and I just really want to thank our staff for bringing those concerns to the industry, making sure that those questions were answered, and also for, um, taking our staff for a little tour of downtown on the scooters. I wish I had a, a video camera, a video on that. It was kind of, um, kind of exciting to see the ones that were trying for the first time to be on a scooter. But I think it's something that's really needed in the downtown area. It's, um, downtown Phoenix over the last ten years has become that cool funky place where, uh, where a lot of young people are, and young adults are gathering, and I think this would be something that, as a pilot program, we'll see if it's successful or not, and hopefully it works out and we can spread it throughout the, the whole City of Phoenix.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
I had a question last night, and I think I answered it correctly, but I'm going to verify. Uh, what a constituent had stated to me is that, uh, where they live, there will, the geofencing happens. And I said, "Well, you know what? You have three choices, or really two choices." So the two choices is where the scooters land, you will also be able to pick up a grid bike, and you can continue on, uh, with the grid bike in your neighborhood, or, uh, this person happens to live by light rail, and I just said, "And then you can pick up the light rail and go on, um, to your house." And I'm sure many of you can probably figure out what former, um, city employee that was questioning me and grilling me that now works with ASU, so a shout-out to Rick Neymark. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Noakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring? Gallego?
Yes. We have a motion to approve item eighty-nine.
Second?
And a second, Leonard Clark. Water agreement with the town, the town of Cave Creek.
Apologize, Mayor, uh, and Council. I did not know that we would have a chance to speak impromptu, so I normally would only have five items, I promise you, in the future, unless I spend five hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars to get elected, which I don't think is going to be happening. You don't have to worry about me speaking more, uh, but, uh, I just want to say that I, I approve of this deal with Cave Creek, but it also further illustrates the shortages we're having now. We're in a desert, and, you know, we are a valley civilization, and, uh, and I like that the fact that the City of Phoenix is working with the beautiful people and the people that run the government of Cave Creek, this, uh, area. We're going to all have to work together very closely because we have some huge challenges. I fear that people are being lulled into complacency because we had a good rainy season, uh, wet season here last year, so thank you for, I hope you'll approve this, uh, and, uh, we have to all start learning how to conserve water better, like City of Tucson. We'll do, we can get, we can up Tucson on this. They have quite an extensive, uh, water, rainwater collection system. Why can't we do it? Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor? Stark? Williams?
Yes.
Waring? Gallego?
Yes. Item passes unanimously. That concludes the agendized business of this meeting. We now move to citizen comment. Apologize in advance for any mispronunciations of citizen names. R.E. Gullian. Followed by Noel Rosen. Noel will be followed by Catherine Coban. And just as a reminder for folks in, in citizen comment, we cannot donate time, but you have up to three minutes to adjust the council. We ask everyone to listen respectfully and to not use foul language.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Noel Rosen. I came all the way here from Wickenburg, and I represent Rally for Law Enforcement. We're here to support our police. I think it's terrible just what just happened when they took an issue that had, regarding purchasing, and turned it into an anti-police, uh, you know, criticism of the police, which had nothing to do with it. And I want to say to all the members of law enforcement that are in this room, I support you. You cannot base everything on a portion of video that was put out there on social media to attack our police. That's what it was. It was politically motivated. And I'm going to say, Councilman DeCiccio, you and I have gone back and forth. I've been where you're at. I've seen where they've called anybody that supports police fascists. I've heard racist. I've heard bootlicker. I've heard Gestapo. I've heard all of this stuff. But our cops risk their lives every day. I don't believe that a criminal, two criminals, taking their kids on a crime spree should be rewarded with ten million dollars. That's ridiculous. Because Phoenix Police did release that video, and it clearly shows the two individuals stealing from that store, and they had their children with them. Now, let's get to the heart of the issue, the facts. The father of these children is already facing charges in Tempe for assaulting two police officers. Okay, that's a fact. You had his fiancee, the mother of those children, they, she had warrants out for her arrest, three misdemeanor warrants. And I think it's ridiculous that the other side is trying to make the claim that it's okay to steal in this case, because I've, I've heard that. You know, we need to stop attacking our cops. We need to back them, and we need to thank them for the job they do, because it's a hard job. And you know what? What happened last week at the, uh, last City Council meeting, Mayor Gallego, you should be ashamed of yourself for not clearing the room. You should have cleared the room of those agitators, okay? Because that's what they were doing. They were here to parade before the cameras. You should have cleared the room. You should have the guts to back our officers. Our officers right now are being thrown under the bus. This is politically motivated, and let me tell you something, it's happening all over the country. And just to kind of add to this, we've already had five police officers killed in the line of duty in the last week. Don't side with the agitators and the criminals, okay? Because I'm seeing what's happening. I'm seeing what's happening in the media where the cops are being attacked. This is a war on police, and we need to back our officers. Those officers, in the case that happened here in Phoenix, they did their jobs, okay? I see nothing wrong with what they did. And I got to tell you, when it started out, they were, they were talking about the cops using foul language. Well, let me tell you something. If foul language was a crime, we'd all be in jail. Some of us doing double times, some of them doing triple sentences, I can tell you that.
Thank you for your testimony.
But the bottom line is, we need to back our cops, and I back our Phoenix, Phoenix P.D., to all the officers in this room, to all the officers that can hear me. There are people that support you. Thank you for the job you do. It matters.
Catherine will be followed by Heidi Garrett, who will be followed by Mark Rodriguez. Is Heidi here? Is Mark Rodriguez here?
Heidi Garrett.
Heidi's here. All right.
Hi, my name is Heidi Garrett, and I am a wife, a mama to seven beautiful children, and we attend Apology Church. I'm here to speak today for those who cannot speak for themselves. I'm not going to tell you about the inherent dignity and worth of every human being, or that children in the womb are image bearers of the Almighty God, or that you have a responsibility before God to defend the defenseless because these things you already know, and you will be held accountable for what you know and you do not act upon. Today, I want to challenge you to think through what legalized murder of unwanted, potentially suffering, or burdensome tiny humans actually means. Something I didn't tell you is that while I am the mother of seven beautiful children, I didn't give birth to all those children. Two of my children were adopted from the foster care system, and the other, we're actually currently in the process of adopting and rescuing from a life of extreme suffering and neglect in another country. I want to know what you would have to say to my babies when they ask me, "Why, Mama? Do people think that it's okay to kill babies that they don't want? Why, Mama? Do you think that it's okay, or why do people think it's okay to kill babies? Because their lives might be hard." Because you see, my three babies, they were unwanted, and their lives had been full of suffering, more suffering than most of you could probably imagine. People claim it's a right to kill the tiniest of our kind simply because they aren't wanted, or maybe they might suffer, or maybe it would be hard for their mothers, or maybe even something unspeakably evil happened to their mom that made them come into the existence that they have. But do you have any idea what you're saying to children like mine when you say the unwanted, suffering children, who might be a burden to their mothers, should be murdered? Because I do. Those are my children. I have an idea. Maybe we should just assemble a team of people to knock door-to-door and ask citizens three questions. Are you wanted? Are you suffering or might you suffer? And are you a burden to anyone? If those citizens answer yes, we can just end their suffering right there. And if that sounds insane, that's because it is. It is insane to say that you have the right to take away someone's life simply because you don't want to be responsible for their life. And it is insane to say that you have the right to take away someone's life because their life may perhaps be full of suffering. Suffering is what makes life beautiful. Without suffering, we have no compassion, no sacrifice, nothing to overcome. And without suffering, life means nothing. If the method of ridding the world of suffering is to kill the people who may potentially suffer, we have no people left. But I want to tell you today about my God. My God is a God who's willing to suffer and be murdered for His children. That's what true love looks like. My God was willing to put Himself through torture and death because He loved His children, and He didn't do anything to deserve the wrongs that were done to Him. When you are willing to justify murder simply because someone wasn't wanted, might suffer, be a burden, or it might be traumatic for their mothers, what you're really saying is murder is okay because I want to do it. And you and I both know that that is a lie from the pit of hell. Please use your God-given authority in the city to be a voice for those who cannot speak for themselves. Please defend the defenseless and be a voice for the preborn.
Is Mark Rodriguez still here? Paul Yoder? Paul will be followed by John Harrington.
I want to salute the members of the police force for doing a wonderful job for us, and also the council for doing a good job. I'm a resident of District Five, and today I wanted to share with you my disappointment and the disappointment of so many of my friends at the lack of leadership of our new mayor when she presided over a ridiculous circus in this room last week, in which she tolerated language that she would never have condoned from pro-police speakers. And I was immediately reminded, I was immediately reminded of an incident that happened several years ago in Cambridge, Massachusetts, involving the police, where a national leader proclaimed that the police acted stupidly right off the bat, only to find out after all the facts were in how ridiculous that statement was. And I would like to urge all of the council members, and especially the mayor, to remember that the hallmark of good leadership is to remain impartial and to wait till facts are in before you pronounce judgments. Thank you.
John Harrington, followed by Neil Westbrooks.
Hi, I'm here today to thank the council and the mayor for allowing me to speak. Uh, and I'd also like to thank the police department for the over three hundred calls we get to our building every year. Uh, we have over three hundred service calls from our police department in a building run by the Phoenix Housing Department. I'm not sure how secure that is, but I'm also here because I am being bullied and intimidated by the City of Phoenix Housing Department, starting with the lady Deborah, or Debbie Sebastian, Angie Hodgson, Huxton, uh, Ronnie Getman, and Cindy Lutler. They've been, all I've asked from August of seventeen, August of two thousand seventeen, when I was elected President of the Resident Council of Pine Tower, it's a hundred and fifty-six member council, from day one, I've had a problem with the county, with the Housing Department going by the MOU, which is the memorandum of understanding, which I signed in August of two thousand seventeen as president. I'm currently the last elected vice president of the council. Uh, I'm being bullied and intimidated into being evicted. They, so far, they've sent me three eviction notices to be vacated, knowing, and they know full well that it takes a hearing before a judge through HUD to be evicted, but they've been evicting people for years without that due process. Uh, they've tried to do it to me, and I, I went to HUD, and the last bit of advice I got from the supervisor at the field of HUD was ignore them, which I've been doing, because I've been given a move-out date of May the twelfth. I did not leave. I've been given a move-out date of June the tenth. That was my five-day notice. I did not leave. My next eviction My next eviction date is June the 28th, and I will not be leaving, because I'm waiting to do it by MOU rules. I can only be evicted by HUD through the court. The Housing Department tries to use intimidation. I've got letters here that they send me where they tell you, "You must be out on this date. This is your final notice." Well, I'm 70 years old. I moved into that building when I was 67, three years ago, with the intention of having a home, of having a residence. I did not realize when I filled out the paperwork and signed the lease, I was being institutionalized by the city. Because your limits, your civil rights are limited. I have been told that I cannot do certain freedom of expression things there. I, I was told by Debbie that the balcony that I have off my apartment is not mine. Funny that I'm paying rent. But then Debbie's also the person that said, "John, you don't pay rent, HUD does." Well, I'm sorry, but I do pay some of the rent. Yes, I'm in housing. But I think that was pretty rude to be told that, "No, I don't pay rent, HUD pays your rent." She's also denied me to allow to decorate my balcony. She comes to me with problems that she says I'm having when there's 47 other balconies that are in fractions, you know, that she won't address. She's told me that, you know, the balcony doesn't belong to me, I think I said that, but...
Thank you. We will ask that a staff member follow up with you. Thank you.
I would, I would love to talk to someone, because I have talked with the city mayor's office. Alexa was supposed to do something, nothing. Most recently, the city manager's office, Ms. Dickerson, was supposed to do some follow-up, nothing. And I'm in District 8, and your predecessor refused to help me twice. You know, I've gone everywhere I can think of to get help. And I've got a list here of over 48 organizations, agencies, and so on, that I've called. No help. This is my last and final chance before I'm thrown out into the streets by machinations, by an organization that should be investigated. They've lied to me numerous times. Ronnie Getman, the last time, when she told me...
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. We will try to follow up.
I would like to have a follow-up.
Neil Westbrooks, followed by Jean Bries. Is Neil still here? Jean? Is Jean Bries? Dori Levy.
Thank your mayor, city council. Councilwoman DeCecio, I want to thank you for supporting our police officers. I'm a 911 operator and dispatcher for the Phoenix Police Department. I've been with the department 18 years. And it was overwhelming to me three years ago when I took my son to the Phoenix Police Museum when I was on vacation and walked into the memorial room for the officers. There's one whole wall of police officers that lost their lives just since I started employment 18 years ago. Each and every situation, there's been tactical plans learned and ways to prevent officers from being killed in the future. There's also an example of when the criminals out-armed the police officers back in February 28th, 1997, in Hollywood, California. 12 police officers and eight citizens were shot that day because of the fact that the police officers did not have the ammunition and weapons to fight back against two bank robbers that had better weapons. And I just feel that everybody needs to support the officers in the investigation, let everything play out. The whole story has not come forward due to the confidentiality of any investigation within the Police Department. As far as a citizen disciplinary panel, well, our disciplinary review board with the Phoenix Police Department already has citizens in place on the board. They do have a say. And if those citizens want to be on the board, then they should move forward to be able to request being on our disciplinary review board that already is balanced with all the officials on the board and peer employees that support or listen to each and every disciplinary case. It's, we just really need to support our police officers. The lack of respect the public has for the officers has resulted in a lot of our 911 operators not staying with the department. We're way understaffed. And then with dispatchers being threatened, there's a lot more dispatchers and 911 operators that were ready to throw in the towel last week. But we need to stick together, we need to stay strong, and do everything we can to serve the public that we're here to protect. Thank you very much.
Mayor, just a question of staff on that as a follow-up. I had a conversation with their union leader, Frank Pacholi. I should know him, I've known him pretty well. And he said they were about 15 to 20 individuals short in dispatch and 911. I told him that I'd be supportive of adding more if he could, you know, bring that proposal forward. Could we find out where we're at with that, with the proposal that they put forward on that? And I would be supportive of adding more there.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, yes, we can get your report on the staffing of 911 and dispatch, yes.
Israel will be followed by El Menjes. Is Israel here? Is that, okay.
Hello, city council members. My name is Israel Mingus, and I'm 10 years old and a Christian. I'm here because I want to help you realize that abortion is murder and against the law and God's law. 1 John 3:11-12 says, "For this is the message you heard from the beginning. We should love one another. Do not be like Cain, who belonged to the evil one and murdered his brother. And why did he murder him? Because his own acts were evil and his brothers were righteous." The first time I heard about abortion was when my mom was speaking, reading the Bible to my older siblings. They're also speaking today. I was in a different room, and when my mom explained to them what abortion was, I ran out of the room and yelled, "What?" And my blood was boiling. I cannot believe people hire these assassins to murder their children. To them, I would say, "You will be that baby's grave, you murderers. Babies are not a burden, they're a blessing." If you were the baby getting aborted today, would you beg and plead and cry out to your parents to save your life? I think you would. You are disobeying the Arizona statute 13-3603 by continuing to allow abortions to happen in Phoenix. I've been wanting to become a doctor for a while, but abortion doctors are a bad representation of a doctor. Doctors are supposed to heal and help, not kill and destroy. If you were the baby, would you think abortion is murder while he works swimming away from the sharp cold tool trying to rip you apart limb by limb? If you say no, you would be lying, and lying is a sin. Abortion is murder, murder is a sin, and the Bible tells us that sin sets you apart from God, and the wages of sin is death. God will pour out His wrath on all, on you for all eternity. But there is hope for you. You can have your sins forgiven. Jesus died on the cross so that our sins can be forgiven. You can no longer be an enemy of God. All you need to do is put your faith in Jesus and repent of your sins. Jesus will clothe you in His righteousness and cover you in His blood.
My name is Ellie Mingus, and I have one older brother, two younger brothers, and three younger sisters. My mom, Jennifer Mingus, who spoke to you in April, and two of my brothers are speaking here today as well. I have a question for you. If you were an unborn baby, created in the image of God, floating in your mother's womb, and your mother paid a doctor to rip you apart limb by limb because she didn't love you enough to keep you, how would you feel? Would you feel unloved and unwanted as you lay cold in a metal trash can? What would you have said to your mother if you could speak to her? "Mommy, save me. Mommy, don't murder me. Don't make this office my grave. Mommy..." Then what happens to the mother? She's still a mother, and she stays a mother of her dead baby. Following the abortion are many health concerns, including depression. Unless she is heartless, she can't help but feel broken after murdering a human soul, and her own flesh and blood at that. What happens to the babies after they're brutally removed from the only home they ever knew? Some companies will actually come and pick up the medical waste and incinerate the dead babies. Is this what our world is becoming? And you, as our appointed magistrates, have the power to change it. When you were sworn to office, you promised to uphold Arizona law, but you don't. You don't enforce AZ 13-3603, which makes abortion illegal, and you continue to allow the gruesome murder of innocent children to go on every day. We are here to plead with you to make Phoenix a sanctuary city for our unborn neighbors. God calls us to love our neighbors as we would love ourselves, and I'm certain you wouldn't allow a doctor to rip your arms off your torso and throw you away to die. In any other situation on earth, ripping a person's limbs off and literally throwing them away to die would land you in jail. Only in this one instance, an unwanted baby, is this inhumane act okay, or normal, or choice, or acceptable even? These babies you murder daily are innocent. Although they inherit original sin like every other human being on earth, they have no earthly sin against you, or their mothers, or anyone. These babies aren't criminals, but killing one could make these mothers and doctors criminals. If only you, our magistrates, would enforce these laws that make abortion illegal. Let these babies live in their mother's wombs until they're ready for the world. The mother's womb is supposed to be the safest place on earth, a wall of protection for the baby, until he or she is big enough to survive on his or her own. But you've turned the womb into a holding cell for the baby until the mother arrives at a modern-day concentration camp where she pays an assassin to destroy her own flesh and blood. All I can do about this horrible crime is plead with you to make Phoenix a sanctuary city. What you can do is repent of your grave sin and enforce AZ 13-3603. And what God can do is change your heart from evil to righteous through his son, Jesus' death and resurrection. Repent and believe. Thank you.
Desiree Mays.
Hi, sorry, it's been a long day for us. We gotta wait a while to speak with you guys, so... Anyways, okay, my name's Desiree. I've come to speak with you, Mayor Gallegos specifically. But before I do, Councilwoman DeCecio, you say you're pro-life. I see you coming up here being very outspoken against... Last week, I saw you stand up to a whole crowd of people that were certainly unhappy with you. You didn't hold back. Man, we need you to do the same thing. There's kids' lives at stake. We need you to be as bold as you were last week and this week for these children who are dying. You can stand up to these people. You, you said something today that if, you know, one life of a policeman should not, you know, come up against any political reasons. Nobody should die for any political reasons. What about the life of one child? One child made in the image of God. So I'm just coming today to encourage you to be bold. We can see that you can do it. We'll stand behind you if you do. Okay? Mayor Gallegos, I just wanted to specifically talk to you today. I watched your State of the City address last week, and I was moved by so much of what you had to say. Obviously, as a nursing mom, I really appreciate that you put the nursing stations in Phoenix Sky Harbor, or your, you know, the hard work you've done to do that. You talked a lot about just your care for Phoenicians, our homeless, suicide rates in the valley. You had a number of issues that you were concerned about, and I could see that you had a genuine care for people, and I appreciate that. And I will be praying for you that God leads you to lead this city in a way that glorifies Him and brings justice. But I just want to challenge you today to be consistent. It's evident that you care for Phoenicians last week. You even referenced our youngest of residents, but technically speaking, our youngest of residents are still in the womb. And you mentioned you came to Phoenix to get the same opportunities in your pickup truck that you wanted to carve your own destiny. How about these children? You know, you, you said that you've been an open supporter of abortion. You don't, you know, hide that fact. But I just want to say, I just don't really believe you that you are. I don't believe that if a woman came to you today and said, you know, "I'm pregnant, but I'm gonna be a single mom, but I have career goals, I, I want to go to college," that you would tell her, you know, "Her child has to die in order for those things to happen." Because you are a shining example that women can have both. You've talked about the struggles of being a single mom, but you can't help but beam with pride when you talk about your son. I bet he motivates you to work harder each day. So I'm just challenging you today to turn and change your mind. I was pro-choice almost my whole life. I think we're actually about the same age. I'm 37 years old. And for most of my life, I was pro-choice. And it wasn't until Jesus Christ saved me and gave me a new heart and eyes to see that I was supporting this atrocity and that I was being a human rights hypocrite, that I was for the equality of some, but not for all. And that's what, that's what repentance means, is to turn or to change your mind. So I'm just asking you today just to think about what's been said. Think about your convictions and if they line up, and if you're being consistent with them. And, you know, it's, I know it's been mentioned. We just pray that you would make Phoenix a sanctuary city for the preborn. I'm not here to attack you, mayor. I'm just here to encourage you to look at what you're saying that you value and just be consistent.
Thank you for your testimony.
I appreciate your time, mayor. Truly, I'm praying for you. And Councilwoman DeCecio, seriously, we will stand behind you if you're as bold as you were today for these preborn children. Thank you.
Kat McKenney.
Hi, mayor, and city councilmen, and staff, and those citizens that are here. My name is Kat McKenney, and I represent several victims of police brutality who have had this inflicted upon them by the Phoenix Police Department. Now, it is a real thing, and it is something that we need to address. Is this a systemic problem? Yes. And I'm gonna give you some examples. We just had 75 officers accused of making racial comments on their social media, using things, and saying things that weren't very lightly taken by a lot of members of the community, without any regard to them being disciplined for that. We have a lack of oversight in the department. We have a funneling of information, a lack of transparency, a lack of accountability. And we also have one of the most dangerous police departments in the country. That was noted by the Associated Press on December the 18th. And the answer that we get is that the citizens here are more violent. Well, in regards to many of these killings that are happening, many of these victims don't have a gun. So what violence are they inflicting that makes them more violent than the police themselves? Now, I want to know why is this? And this should be a question that, that should be considered. Why do we have more police shootings in this city than anywhere in this country? And matter of fact, we can almost go into the whole world. We have more police shootings right here in Phoenix than we have in the whole world. Now, regarding the video of domestic terrorism that was imposed on Drevon Ames and Ayesha Harper and their four-year-old and their one-year-old daughter, the shoplifting crime video, please look at that video very carefully. Do not be fooled. You do not see them taking anything out of that store. If you do your research, you can read that police report, and you'll see for yourself that they walked out of there with nothing, and they knew that. We just had an exoneration conference on Monday in regards to that. So he was not shoplifting. And if anybody shoplifted, it was the four-year-old daughter, and you can arrest her for that. So let's keep that clear. The parents did not shoplift or steal anything out of that Family Dollar store. Look at the video again. And this is the problem that we're having. We're getting information that comes out half. And I don't want to cuss, but half-assed. Today, we got video from Jacob Harris, and we're asking for the rest of that footage because they did not give us all that footage. because they did not give us all that footage. That boy was running for his life, and the police was not scared. And it's also the same officer who shot three other people this year and have not received any discipline. Where is the authority exercised over taking control of these officers? When they do...
Our final testimony today will be from Eric Brock.
Mayor, as he's walking up here, Eric used to be an intern in my office. He now interns in the state treasurer's office. He's an outstanding young man of Arizona, or of Phoenix. And we had this from all the districts, but he was also the top of that. I cannot tell you how proud we are of him. Eric, you've just done amazing work. He's going to American University now. Just, he's just an amazing and brilliant young man, and we're just proud of you. You know, his big inspiration is President Obama, which wants, he wants to become president someday, and I think it's exciting. I think we're just glad you're here. Thanks. And he's got something he wants to do. This is, every intern in the office is required to do something big, like something large and make a change. And this is his plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Mayor, members of the council. I've had the pleasure of being an intern in the halls of this very city, working to solve our city's greatest problems, and I appreciate that sentiment. Today, I'm submitting a citizen petition that would require city agencies to seek permission from the council when acquiring facial recognition and other privacy-invasive technologies. Perhaps the greatest challenge our city will face is the one that we cannot foresee. The rapidly advancing facial recognition that is being used by police forces across the world are continuing to invade the civil liberties that are guaranteed to us in this country. Efficiency will be our greatest downfall, and critics of this very petition will argue that policing will become quicker. Yet the same efficiency, as the London Police Department discovered, falsely accuse citizens as criminals 96% of the time. And while some governments have learned of this horrible error, China has embraced this technology with open arms. In fact, it's become quicker to identify and incarcerate their Muslim minority who are then hauled off to gut-churning incarceration camps. It's become quicker to identify members of society that they deem less of in order to cast them in their social credit system. Mayor and members of the council, respectfully, your decision on this very petition will be remembered in either two ways. You can be the council to protect the people of Phoenix from the atrocities of mechanized policing, or you can be the very council that became legally complicit with mass incarceration. At this time, I'd like to request that council direct city staff to research outline and define acceptable uses of these technologies, measures to secure the data collected, and limitations of these technologies for the purpose of formulating a citywide policy to be considered by council at a future date to be determined at the direction of the council. Thank you for your time. Again, it's been a privilege to work with many of you. Thank you. Oh, and I'd like to submit that petition for the record, please.
And so the request is to have the city begin the discussion, correct? And to move forward with looking at developing a policy? I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.